Yeah.
I don't know if I have any information.
Yeah.
This is the one of them. You're killing me. It's a world. It's a star. I'm gonna. House media. I want to say that's something. It's a question. See, it's something. How difficult is that? But that. Now, I'm. Your character will perform. What would you suggest? No, you can't. No, they're not. Yeah, I will. I would say that's the. Yeah. I mean, that's. You know, yes, so we should. But you said you're twenty years. But then you were. Well, now you see what that is. Oh, it's me. It's sort of a matter of which they can. But they're probably just stepping in. You're a lot of service. I mean, it's interesting. I didn't do it about now. Well, I'm going to be sleeping. I like. I want to. So I'm just. I want this. I'll learn this was. Sure. Right. Okay. Somebody. Hmm. I mean, that's. I don't even know. Yeah. Yes. Hey. So cool. Hey.
Hi, Tom.
I was saying. Friends. I know I'm trying to. The hearts. But yes. Well, how do you want to do it, right? You know, it's. So that is. I get. You're tired of what you got to do. Oh, you guys. Obviously. Oh, yeah. You make some. I love these. These. This is pretty much. This is why I'm. I asked you this last year. This is. This is. I want to hear from Steve. Okay. Good. Probably. This is one of the. Change. Students come next week. And I start. I'm. I just. That is. We'll never end up. Okay. See. Maybe.
Would like to call the order. Study meeting of the West Valley City Council. August thirteenth, week four, four thirty P M. We're in the Molde Purpose Room in West Valley City Hall. We'd like to excuse Mayor Langton tonight. All other members of the council are present. Here in person. And we'll join. Also joined with Mr. E. Folpeely, our city manager. And Mr. Paul Kamik, our city reporter. We'll move to the agenda. Minutes are the first item on the agenda.
I move to approve those minutes.
Second. Move to seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. You are regular agenda meeting tonight, any changes?
No changes.
It's such a big agenda. Okay. Any questions from the council on the agenda tonight? You have public hearings scheduled for August twentieth. See. Accepting public input on application G P V dash three dash twenty twenty four. Requesting a zone change from agriculture minimum lot size, half acre to R one eight. Who's making this presentation? Okay, so we'll turn the time over to Mr.. So. I mean, no matter what.
Thank you, sir. Steve Pastor, Community Development Director. So this one will actually be a fairly brief update. So three weeks ago, when the council reviewed this application. The seen the majority of the council was not interested in a P U D, but wanted more just typical eight thousand square foot lots. So the applicant heard that message and worked with staff to come up with a new concept that was just eight thousand square feet or eight thousand square foot lots or more typical subdivision that was not a P U D. And once they had that concept, they went back to the landowner and said, hey, now that we're we're going to have fewer lots. We were. They tried to essentially negotiate. A different price based on the the reduced number of lots. The owner wasn't interested in that, and so the applicant withdrew their application. So this actually will not be on the the agenda next week because they they have since withdrawn.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty four dash one twenty five. Chief Jacobs.
Evening, calling Jacobs, Chief of Police. I come before you tonight with a memorandum of understanding with you between the West Valley City Police Department and the Utah Attorney General's Office. In regards to the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. This is a longstanding relationship that we've had with the Attorney General. And we've been a part of their program for many, many years. Accepting this. M O U includes a grant amount of fifteen thousand dollars to be used for overtime training and equipment. And this would run July first, twenty twenty four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty five. For the annual run. And this would require a budget opening.
Okay.
Any questions? Is there anything in this M O U that's different or new from previous years?
No, it's the same. Basically, we help them with investigations in these types of crimes. And we focus on perpetrators that are in our city.
Yeah, M O U. M O U was one July, is it? Has it started yet, or it just?
It's pending approval.
Yeah. And then as they, I know nothing has changed, but has the amount changed over the years, or they?
It hasn't changed in, I'd say, the last five years. It used to be either ten or twelve thousand, and it went up to fifteen. It's been consistently at fifteen for the last at least three years that I can remember.
And that amount cover our expenses for the resources that it even towards this, or?
It does cover the overtime that we expend towards this program and any computer needs that we might have. It does. We we make sure we stay within our allotted amount.
Small amount for what we?
Yeah, it just limits the amount of overtime that they're able to put towards this program. But we only have one, maybe two detectives that participate in it, so. It's. It it seems. Like it's been adequate.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Resolution twenty four and one twenty six. Subrecipient agreement. Just paid a consortium. The received home investment partnership funds. Sounds like something for Mr. Morris.
Thank you. This is just our annual re. Re sign up, if you will, with Salt Lake County to receive our portion of the Salt Lake Consortium that receives home funds from HUD. And our this year, we're at hundred ninety five thousand nine hundred eighty one, which I think is fif- approximately fifteen thousand less than we got last year. Other than that, there's not a whole lot of change.
Can you remind me who receives these funds? Look, it's actually.
What does it pay for? It it can go for a variety of funds. It's similar to community development block grant funds, but a little more restrictive. It has to be specifically for lower moderate income folks and their residential uses. So you could fix up homes, you could purchase homes, you can. Help people with aspects of housing, down payment assistance, things of of that nature. Any city that's over fifty thousand in population is qualified or eligible to apply for them. The administrative burden is is significant if you want to do it yourself. We could. We could run our own program, but it requires a twenty five percent. A general fund match. And so Salt Lake County volunteered to be the lead agency on that, so we don't have to come up with a twenty five percent match. If we did it ourselves, we'd probably get around three hundred thousand dollars, twenty five match that we'd have to come up with, whatever that is, sixty seventy thousand dollars. And then we'd have to hire some very specific grant. Expertise to run the program ourselves. So it it's probably at best sixes whether we were going to run the program ourselves or just allow Salt Lake County to be the lead agency. And they they do a reasonable job of of administering the grant. And so we've been. We've been happy to do that with them each year.
So residents apply for. For this money and. And so does it come to imminent loan or grant?
It depends on what their status is. So we have various levels. So we we do a certain level is a grant. First five thousand dollars would be a grant. And then depending on what your financial status is, if you're an elderly, you're a widow, you're disabled, that it ends up being just a forgivable. Not forgivable, but I forget the word, but we have a lien on the property. And when the person either sells the home or they die. And and sell the home, that's when we get our money back, all the way up to a a low interest loan. So it there's a there's a scale there, so it's just depending. We we operate those funds on a first come, first service, first serve basis. Typically do about twenty to twenty five homes, depending on how extensive. The the repairs are that are needed.
So like. Like I heard, like they not selling their house. Like five years or seven years, they cannot do that crap. Yeah.
They've got to keep the house for five.
Yes.
Yeah. They sell it within five years, then we want our money back.
Yeah.
And and it needs to be owner occupied. They can't rent it out, things like that, to make sure that it. I mean, it's it's it helps everybody. It helps us because we're as a city, we're investing in our home stock and fixing the thing. They're not the 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 projects aren't like you need new carpet. It's for upgrading electrical and plumbing systems, windows, roofs, things like that, that that. Make the house sustainable for for twenty years without having to additional, put additional funds into it. That's that's the goal.
I just want to let you know what people want just a few days. We say we have.
We've, over the years, we've targeted various areas, the My Hometown project, we. Our our grant. Phil Phil Keefe does a great job for us. Meets weekly with the My Hometown folks and takes those applications from them, referrals from them. And as those as those people help, a lot of the people apply for the for the grant. So very, very closely working with my hometown.
Any further questions?
Just on the reporting side, there were so. We report to Salt Lake County and then they compile everything back to HUD.
Exactly.
We're not applying directly and we don't have to match the like five cents for every dollar.
That's right. Salt Lake County matches the, and so as we apply as a. As six cities in in the county, other than Salt Lake City, that are that are in the consortium, comes up to populate. And there's a complex formula for deciding what the grant is. And so the county receives the grant. And and provides that twenty five percent match for the whole grant. And then and that that's why we get a hundred ninety five thousand instead of three hundred thousand. So it costs us approximately a hundred thousand dollars to be a part of the consortium. But that allows, we don't have to have the personnel that are that are grant specific technicians and how to operate that grant. And we don't have to come up with a seventy thousand dollar match from the general fund.
Is the budget at the end of the agreement? Was much more than the grant amount. Two hundred and seventy.
Yeah, they they. We used to get. HUD used to provide our. Our portion of the grant, so we all knew what we could get if we went by ourselves, and they've kind of ceased doing that. I don't know if they're trying to prevent people from. Going their own way. It's easier for HUD to deal with one entity, Salt Lake County, than to deal with the six of us individually. But yeah, two two seventy is probably about what what we'd end up with if we decided to to do that on ourselves. And we could do that. We. You know, each, every three years that we re up for the grant, we have to, we have to notify Salt Lake County if we're going to stay in the consortium. The last time we did that was two thousand three, two thousand twenty three. So here in two thousand twenty six, we'll have another opportunity. If if council wishes to. That to go it alone, we could certainly do that. Over the years, there's other cities for various reasons have thought, maybe we should break off our own little mini consortium and and. And partner with West Jordan or any of the other entities around here. And have a three. A three city consortium instead of six, just to. For for various reasons. So those are all possibilities in the future if council wants to do that.
Any further questions?
Thank you.
Resolution twenty four dash one twenty seven. Authorizing the execution of an interlocal cooperation agreement, Salt Lake County for access to aerial imagery. Jenny Erquah.
I'm Jenny Erquah, I T Deputy Division Head. And this resolution is to authorize us to enter into an agreement with Salt Lake County Surveyor's Office and Assistant's Office to purchase or participate in the purchase of aerial photography. We use both the digital digital versions and services to to. We use them throughout the city in pretty much every department with software such as our G I S software for mapping. And all sorts of different applications where the city, you know, might visualize growth, might compare urban changes and development. Reference for new spatial information, measurements, among other things. And we generally, we generally participate in this agreement and this project every year. Because it's a lot cheaper to purchase the aerial photography by partnering with Salt Lake County and the other cities in the county. And it helps to ensure higher higher accuracy aerial photography than, you know, just getting something off of Google. Any questions?
Questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you. Resolution twenty four dash one seventy eight. Issue your contract. Mr. Wilson, I'll let you do this one and the next one.
Good afternoon, Council. Kobe Wilson, City Engineer. The purpose of this resolution is to award a construction contract for our Kiowa Storm Drain Project, our Kiowa Way Storm Drain Project. Just to kind of help you get a better understanding what this project, the purpose of this project. Here on Kiowa Dray, this is just our storm drain network map here that we're looking at. We have an existing open, open channel ditch that runs north and south here up to thirty five hundred south. That ditch is actually filled in kind of over the years. It's it doesn't have the capacity needed to convey the storm water and the irrigation tellwater necessary. And we have had some some periodic flooding problems where that ditch has exceeded capacity and the water has come down Kiowood Way and ended up in the front yards of some of these homes. So that is one objective of this project is to go in and to pipe this open channel with the correct pipe size to carry the capacity needed to avoid the flooding issues that we've had out there. The other purpose of this project, you can see that currently we we convey the storm water from Kiowa Way up to thirty five hundred south through backyards. This this pipe network through these back private yards is actually failing and has a lot of issues. And so we want to abandon that pipe that's on private property and and intercept the the storm water here on Kiowa Way and route that over to the new pipes that will be piping in that ditch. To get this, get these issues off of private property and to have a better functioning storm drain system. So that's a project we've been working on for the past little while. We had the bid opening for this project back in July. We received three bids for this project. The lowest responsible bid came in at four hundred and ninety five thousand. Out to excavation LLC was the low bidder. And so our recommendation is to move forward with this project and to award the construction contract out to excavation and authorize the Public Works Department to spend up to five hundred and thirty thousand dollars in case we have any unforeseen conditions or change orders. Just to give you an idea on the schedule of this project, we have put in the contract that we want to make sure that this north-south. A ditch does get piped sometime this year to avoid additional flooding concerns. But with the pavement work associated involved in Kiowa Way, there's a good chance that the Kiowa Way portion won't be done until spring. So they'll get out there and do the north-south section this fall. And then in the spring, come back and do the Kiowa, Kiowa Way Storm Drain. But that is our recommendation.
Have we worked with out to excavation before?
It's a really good question, and the answer is no. They're actually a fairly new contractor. They're a small company. We did go through the vetting process. We called a couple of people they've been working for, Riverdale City was one of them. Riverdale agreed they're they're new and they're small, but they haven't had any issues with them to this point. And so they had no problems with recommending them. They have been doing smaller projects. When we looked at this and assessed this. To give a a new contractor kind of a chance in the city, this is probably a good project to choose because the majority of the work is in a field outside of major roadways. It's it's not to say we don't have our concerns and we'll we'll have to keep a close eye on them, but nonetheless, they did. They did meet the vetting process, it's just not a contractor we've worked with in the past.
We recently approved a development here in that field. I guess you're working with them.
Yep. Great.
Get that down.
Yep, great point. Yep, we worked with them and they've donated the storm drain easements for us to get in here and and do this. There was some talk about potentially just reimbursing the developer and have them pipe this as part of their development. It was just a timing question. We never can really know for sure when the developer is going to pull the trigger, and we wanted to make sure we got in and got this done. So.
The abandonment of the pipe in the backyards involve excavating on those properties, or?
It does not. So essentially, we'll just end up putting a concrete bulkhead basically in this pipe, so no water is getting diverted into that pipe. But yeah, we don't want to go through the extensive, you know, messing up their landscaping and getting the backyards and so forth. So typically, our abandonment procedure is to put a two-foot concrete bulkhead in there so water can't can't get into the pipe.
Any questions? Okay. Looks like handle twenty four dash one twenty nine.
All right. Well, this is for a co-op agreement with UDOT. The city applied for some safe sidewalk funding through Utah Department of Transportation. This funding source is basically enables you to apply for funds to construct sidewalk on existing state routes. They they establish this program basically in areas where they know they're not coming in to do a major roadway project anytime in the immediate future. And so they do have a funding source for you to apply for funds to do that. It does require a twenty five percent city match. So usually, these are smaller, smaller projects. The state actually changed it this year where they put a maximum authorization or contribution from the state of only a hundred thousand dollars, which kind of ties our hands a little bit on what we can get in and do. The application that we submitted, we kind of. We went a little bigger, hoping that maybe they would see the need and give us a little bit more more money than their maximum. It it worked a little bit. They're going to give us a hundred and sixty nine thousand dollars, but nonetheless, the the limits that we that we proposed, this is on thirty five hundred south, around fifty four hundred west on the north side. I think there's an exhibit put in your packet, but the limits that we proposed, we won't have enough funding to do the entire project. But UDOT is giving us some flexibility to to consolidate the limits and try to maximize the the funding that we have available. So our recommendation is just to move forward with the execution of this co-op agreement so that we can access that state funding.
Questions or comments? It's like a great idea. It's a leverage that cash before we're done for this. Still money on our part, but less than donate ourselves.
For sure.
This sidewalk will take out some. Homes from properties that.
Yeah, and that and that's going to be the biggest cost prohibitive issue that we have and why we won't be able to go the whole stretch is just because of the expense of the right away acquisition. So we're likely going to start on the west end and move as far east as we can. The easternmost property, that's where the the most impact happens to the property on the in their front yard. So that one will be challenging, but we'll just have to get in and start playing with some some layouts and some cost estimates and see where the best use of the funds are.
Okay. That home on the east end. Contacted me last week. Or last year. In issue with Granger Hunter, and they may need to come in and. They've got. Water coming back into the residence.
Okay.
So I don't know if that plays into this or not with. That dispute and swing, they're wanting to tear things up. Sidewalk.
Right. Right, yeah, and that's that is sounding familiar now. Yes, that issue there, we would, we wouldn't want to go in and put our new sidewalk in that area until that dispute is is resolved. So that's a good, a good reminder there.
Any comments or questions? Did you make that easy on me?
Thank you.
Item seven. Does council have any objection to adding all these resolutions to the consent agenda next week?
Those are pretty big, big dollar amounts. Maybe we should consider them separately. I don't know.
Storm grain is the biggest, right? Yeah. And it's not familiar. What do we D and E out and put A through C on the consent? Preference, just something new that we're doing.
Yeah.
It's your call.
Yeah, this is new for us. Should we consider some of these separately? I don't know. Yeah. B is.
Money we're receiving.
Is money we're receiving.
A is money we're receiving.
Yeah.
C is small amount. With all of them. Considered Linda. Also, okay, if we want to pull one or two off. It was all of them.
Okay. Do you mind all of them on the consent agenda, Lawrence, you that? You brought it up.
Is so, I don't I don't know. Is it? Is does this, are we saying that every resolution should just go on the consent agenda? Or? Or anything, I guess, that might be controversial, I guess?
We can pull anything we want.
Right.
Leave it on the regular agenda. So.
Even the day of, when you roll it up.
Yes. Even if we decide next week we want to pull one off, we can do that. This is the place to discuss them and find out how we want to do it.
Right.
Right.
We were just trying to eliminate one step when it was basically, you know, put it on the on the table and there's no discussion. So.
Think that we've had considerable discussion or disagreement on any of these. But in terms of information for the public, maybe B and E be good to present separately to others, as you mentioned. Either receiving the money or, you know, aerial imagery, do that every year. It's not a huge amount. Won't feel strongly either way because they're not. For our first go, are you okay if we do A, B, and C on the consent and D and E separate? See how, see how we feel after a few weeks of this?
Okay.
Okay. You have your marching order.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move down to the communications. Station area plan project introduction. Steve Pastrick. Want to do the introductions?
Thank you, sir. So just a a brief introduction before I have our presenters go through the presentation. So it was back in twenty twenty-two that the state legislature passed House Bill four sixty-two, which required cities to have a station area plan for the half mile around each track station, which in our case we have four. And so working with Wasatch Front Regional Council, we were able to secure funding to hire a team of consultants uh to help us with that effort. And that that team is comprised of WSP, MHTN Architects, and Leland Consulting. And tonight we have here with us Ryan Wallace from, excuse me, MHTN Architects will be presenting. And also online, we have Kelly New, who's the project manager for WSP, and I'll turn the time over to them for the presentation.
Thank you, council, for letting us be here this evening and introduce a support and project to you. Uh, my name is Ryan Wallace. I'm a planner and architect with MHTN. We're based here in in Salt Lake City downtown. We've been around a hundred years. Um, it's very important to us to do work in the communities throughout the state of Utah, but especially here in the Salt Lake Valley, and this type of work is very meaningful. As Steve pointed out, legislation from the state that's focused on leveraging opportunities around transit stations throughout the state, um, enhancing opportunities for communities. So we'll talk about that just a little bit. Kelly, are you able to share the presentation?
Yes. Give me just one second.
Excellent. So tonight is just an introduction to a process that's beginning. This will extend over the coming months. We wanted to introduce you to it. We wanted, uh, we hope to ask for your support of this process, to share with all of those that you interact with throughout the community to get them excited about this opportunity to engage with this process. Go ahead and flip over to our next slide, if you would, Kelly. What we plan to talk through tonight, as mentioned, introductory today, we're we're not presenting any recommendations at this point. We're going to outline the reason for the study, the ways we plan to engage with your community, opportunities for those engagement, uh, specifically project website and survey, and then we're going to outline how we're going to move forward. I think Steve gave a great description of this, but House Bill four sixty-two, just a few years old, twenty twenty-two. Every community that has fixed guideway uh transit within it or rail, uh, you have four stations, as I'm sure you know. Uh, one already has a station area plan in place that would qualify for this. So we'll be looking at three station areas specifically. And the intent of these station area plans really centers around four common goals. There'll be many other things that the steering committee that we'll be working with will tell us is important, and we'll look at those things as well. But when this goes to be certified by Wasatch Front Regional Council, it needs to at least focus on these four items. These are, these are the very important pieces that the state required in the legislation. So availability and affordability of housing, including moderate income housing around station areas, promoting sustainable environmental conditions, enhancing access to opportunities, uh, and increasing transportation choice and connections. So these are things that we'll be focusing on, as well as other things we hear from your steering committee and what we learn as we begin the existing conditions analysis process on this project. We would welcome your comments tonight, once we move forward into to the comment period here of things that you think would be really important for us to look at as we explore this. Because we want these stationary plans not only to meet the state requirement, but to reflect your community and what's important to you. Uh, the station areas we're going to be looking at specifically are River Trail, Redwood Junction, and Decker Lake. As previously mentioned, the Fairborn Station already has a station area plan in place. And as you see, Steve mentioned this as well, we're talking about focusing specifically on a half-mile radius from the station area. Um, and within that, that region, those are the areas we're going to be looking at most specifically. But of course, if there's something that begins within the station area and and moves outside of that half-mile, we want to see recommendations and suggestions to their, to their conclusion, right? So we'll follow any of those issues that need to look outside of the half-mile. We'll, we'll do that for you. Uh, the next slide just shows some imagery of some of these stations as they are today. Some, right, quite a bit of variety across your station areas in terms of land use, uh, block sizes, comfort, access to to transit opportunities, community amenities located within each of these. We'll look in depth at each uh through the lens of analysis, very significant process that is underway, understanding existing conditions. That is something we would present to you at our next future interaction. What we've learned after studying these, some of the things we're hearing from your residents, uh, business owners and stakeholders in these areas. That process is just beginning. So Kelly, with that, would you like to, I'll step aside. Would you like to walk us through some of the process we'll move forward with here?
Great, thank you, Ryan. For the record, I'm Kelly New, and as Steve mentioned, I'm the project manager for this effort. Um, I work for WSP. We are a um primarily a transportation and engineering firm, but we have a small but mighty group of planners. Um, and so our team is focused on the transportation and land use and and those connections between them. Um, we're joined by MHTN Architects, um, led by Ryan Wallace, and they are focusing on urban design, station identity, and placemaking. So they're investigating things like um block sizes, street tree coverage, um, the comfort and accessibility of stations and um the surrounding areas, things like weight finding and um connections to community facilities. Um, and then Leland Consulting Group is based out of Portland, and they are for focusing on market economics. So they uh will be identifying potential opportunities for development and redevelopment. Um, a big focus of this effort is really grounding recommendations in uh uh understanding of the realistic um landscape of development and redevelopment. So Leland is um an expert in this and is supporting us in that um task. And we wanted to outline our plan process. So um just to kind of orient you to what you see on the slide. We have five uh primary sort of tasks or phases within the project. Um, and then each of those has key deliverables um that are developed in that phase. We've also um identified when we will be coming to you and seeking key input um and when you can expect to be involved. I'll also highlight that we do have um a steering committee and encourage you to, if you're interested in in serving on that steering committee, to reach out to Steve and let him know. Um, we are right now kind of formulating um the member list for that and schedule and roles and responsibilities. So um again, encourage you to express interest if if that applies to you. Um, so the project management, of course, um lasts throughout the um duration of the project, but really gets kicked off with um a public engagement plan where we outline all of the ways in which we'll be um reaching out to your community and seeking feedback from key stakeholders as well as the general public. Um, right now, we are in the project discovery phase. So we have um just done an existing conditions analysis, which eat with each firm kind of focusing on their area of expertise. And um we are right now in the process of meeting with key stakeholders uh through one-on-one interviews or small group interviews. Um, so some stakeholders that have been identified through the process are um transportation partners, UDOT and UTA, Wasatch Front Regional Council, um, key leaders of departments, so the Public Works Director, the Parks and Recreation Director, um, the community and uh, excuse me, Neighborhood Services Director, I'm sorry if I'm um messing up that title, um, as well as uh key leadership from South Salt Lake, just to make sure that we're coordinated um as station area boundaries overlap with South Salt Lake. And then um Leland Consulting and MHTN are um also bringing in um members of the development community. So um key developers that have uh done work in your community or have expressed interest in doing work, um, primary landowners within the station area, um, and uh those in the real estate community. So we'll be folding in those sort of anecdotal um findings into our existing snap conditions snapshot. Um, and we'll be presenting those to this, that to the steering committee um for their review. And um we'll also be posting that on our website. So um the information is open to the public and available and accessible. From there, we'll be um with the help of the steering committee, creating the station area vision statements. Um, so each station will have its own unique vision statement and set of objectives. Um, so those will complement what's required of the state, but again, reflect what we hear from the community and what we find in the existing conditions review. Um, we'll also be creating station area base maps that highlight some of the key opportunities and challenges that are identified through the project discovery phase. From there, we'll move into station area alternatives, and again, we'll be developing those um with input from or in collaboration really with the steering committee through a hands-on interactive workshop. Um, so each station area will have its own set of alternatives um to kind of explore different future scenarios of what what the future could look like within the station areas. We'll develop a risk registry to kind of identify some of the hurdles or barriers that um we'll want to be cognizant of as we move forward into the implementation planning. Um, and uh with that, we'll be presenting those uh station area alternatives to you uh for your feedback. And uh based on your feedback, we'll be developing a preferred concept out of those alternatives. Um, the preferred concept will be supported by a project list and implementation matrix that identifies um viable funding sources, uh potential partnerships, timelines, um, really kind of outlining those critical next steps that need to occur in order to make the um recommended actions or projects happen. And we'll be presenting um that preferred concept and implementation matrix to the community through a public workshop. Um, we'll then refine um what the the preferred concept and implementation matrix based on the um feedback that we get through that workshop with the support from the steering committee, and then we'll bring that to you um for and seek adoption. Um, also, within this process is working with the Wasatch Front Regional Council to um approve and authorize those plans as is required by state law. Um, we also wanted to outline the ways in which we'll be um reaching out to the community. So as I mentioned, the um steering committee will be formed, which will be comprised of project stakeholders to really guide the direction and focus of the plan. Um, we're in the middle of those stakeholder interviews, as I mentioned. Um, we have just launched a project website as of yesterday, and so we'll be hosting um all information that is created throughout this planning process on that website so that it's accessible and transparent um to the public. And then um starting actually this week, um also just launched yesterday is a uh survey. And so I'll be sharing a link in just a minute for that. Um, but that will provide an opportunity for the general public to give a feedback on um the key issues and challenges and desires around the station areas. Um, so that's also part of sort of this project discovery phase. Um, we'll be doing intercept surveys over the next week and a half. Um, so we'll be um on tracks platforms, kind of spreading the word to transit riders, encouraging them to participate in the survey and providing information about the process. Um, and then there's also additional outreach, like with flyers in uh local businesses nearby, multifamily housing, et cetera. Um, and then finally, that public workshop, as I mentioned, at the conclusion of the plan, to share the preferred concept and implementation plan and um seek feedback from the community to um finalize the plan process. So as I mentioned, the project website is live. Um, there's a QR code down at the bottom of the screen if that's easy for you. Or uh the website is is pretty simple. It's wvcstationplans.com. Um, so this is just a little preview of the website. If you scroll down, you can, there's a link that takes you right to the survey. There's also an interactive map um where you can identify place-based um challenges, opportunities um on on that map. So kind of two, two parts to the outreach there. Again, um, future deliverables will be found on the map. So this bar at the top here, where it says survey and interactive map, that will be updated as the project progresses to um host key resources like that existing condition snapshot, the three land use and transportation alternatives, and then eventually um the preferred concept and implementation matrix. Um, so we kindly request for you to help us spread the word. Um, we have provided a toolkit that has um advertisements in the form of flyers or social media announcements, along with a a short blurb that you could use for those social media announcements. Um, so Steve will be circulating a link um to you so you can help um let your constituents know about the planning effort, encourage them to participate, and hope that you will also participate. The survey will be open for three weeks. We'll be monitoring um participation and may kind of um amend our outreach strategy depending on participation to make sure that we're really capturing um the demographics of the community and um and are reflective of of the makeup of the community. So again, um, that QR code is here or wvcstationplans.com. And um look forward to hearing um any questions that you have or comments that can help us uh guide the direction of this plan. Thank you.
Any questions?
Just had a quick question. So I just quickly took the survey and I thought it would ask like questions about my opinion on development, and it didn't. It was just just demographics. So how do you gather feedback on what the residents that live there or business or would like to develop?
Go ahead, Kelly.
Yeah, um, I'm actually wondering if maybe um where, did you, so there were only demographic questions?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, there are, there is a set of questions um at the beginning of the survey. Did you indicate um which station you live nearby or are interested in? And like that you use or that you live or work or recreate nearby?
So maybe that was it, because I I left that lane because I only use the West Valley Station. I mean, I go through those.
Yeah, so um we'll, we'll have, that's, it's excellent that you um just broke our survey um so that we can fix it um as it's only been live for less than twenty-four hours. But um so we need to make it so that you can't opt out of that question um because that prompts you for questions about the station areas. Um, so we, we took away the question that says none of these, but we need to make it so that you can't opt out. Um, so let me work on that, and thanks again for um letting us know.
We asked you to become involved, and you did immediately. Your assumption is correct. Those those questions are intended to be on there. It sounds like we just need to update that, Kelly. It's great.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions?
Question.
Maybe I'll just share one more thought, which is it's required by the state um legislature for us to produce this plan, and it needs to be certified by Wasatch Front Regional Council. But this is your plan, and we hope for you and your community members to be as involved as you can. But this is your plan and we hope for you and your community members to be as involved as you can. These station area plans outline the vision for these station areas and will guide, guide their growth and make recommendations. In some cases, that may be, we love what's there. We love these pieces. Absolutely don't change it. There's these opportunities. We want these plans to reflect your community, right? We plan to listen with the intent to understand and come up with a plan that reflects you and your community's vision for each of these station areas to guide the growth and development of them well into the future. These, these are taking a very long-term time horizon into consideration. So we hope that you'll join us, you and, and spread the word within your constituencies to, to get as much involvement as we can.
Sorry, I was in the surveys, so I was distracted, but I do have one question. Can you talk a little bit more about the collaboration with South Salt Lake? Would it stand that informs our report or reinforce their report? Submit something combined.
Kelly, do you want to talk about collaboration with South Salt Lake?
Yeah, sure. So the intent of that is really to understand any sort of plans or future visions that they have for the area around, specifically around the River Trail Station, because that planned boundary or the half-mile boundary from that station goes into South Salt Lake. And so just as it pertains to sort of continuity of land uses or transportation patterns, we want to understand what future plans they have so that we can, you know, be aware, be cognizant of it and match up if, if that's necessary. So it's really just sort of to coordinate on our planning efforts and, and make sure that there aren't any surprises, I guess, when they, when they conduct their River Trail Station plan. Anything you'd add to that, Ryan?
I was just going to, it's an excellent question. We'll also be in touch with them to see if they have any data or information that would benefit this process.
The river, you know, there is such, it, it separates the area. So a lot of South Salt Lake, they don't have easy access to that, to that track stations.
You've immediately cut to the heart of one of the things that we're seeing. The river is a wonderful amenity, but it can also serve as a barrier if there's not frequency of crossing points. And so those are the types of things we'll look at. We'll also try to understand the same about major transportation infrastructure. Where is that presenting a barrier across neighborhoods within the station area? Those are very much at the heart of the types of things we'd be looking at. Supporting connection to these station areas, to adjacent neighborhoods, businesses, et cetera. Yeah, you immediately jumped right to one of the things that we're seeing as well.
Any questions? Concerns discussion? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look forward to being back with you in a few months.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, council calendar. Questions on the calendar? In case you missed it, there was a new updated national night out scheduled for this next week. So came out today. It's Friday. A little more crowded. Any other questions? Potential future agenda items?
To magazines? If, if we want to pivot that in residential areas. Also, I would like to add to that if we're going to do that. Other commercial vehicles, like tow trucks.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, we spoke about it in a real way. A lot of blind spots.
Like to discuss those items?
Yeah, I think it's okay. We, we discussed that.
Okay. You're then on a future agenda item. Any others? Council reports? Didn't damage the floor with the cleats, did we?
Nope.
Okay.
Have I gone in there and mixed it up with the?
It's. The other council reports? I mean, you were out of a few national nights out.
You too.
So. It is kind of fun to get out with those. I know we canceled one last night because of the inclement weather. And I didn't get the notice and neither did one family in the neighborhood because they were still waiting for the chief when I got there. So went out and talked with them and happy to be in West Valley. Teacher at Granger High School, living right next to Hunter High School. And he said he didn't see any conflict there. But he also teaches, coaches Efo's daughter, apparently, at the Lady Lancers Basketball. Efo knew him in high school because he was his coach. So. But he got a plan in life. Was happy to be in West Valley City. Loved it. He said, yeah, there's always problems everywhere you go. But he was happy to be here. He's in his second house in West Valley now. So.
My wife was here. She would report that the farmer's market is her favorite place to be on Thursdays. There's always no salad and vegetables last until the next Thursday. So she, she likes the variety of the booths and entertainment. So it's all fun.
And it's got more votes than it has in the past.
Seems like it too.
There's cinnamon rolls. I haven't noticed fruits and vegetables.
We don't get past cinnamon rolls either.
Other blinders.
Cinnamon roll blind. When you can make a whole meal out of a cinnamon roll. Any other council reports? Okay. Review the agenda for our special redevelopment agency meeting next August twentieth. Mr. Springmeyer.
Good afternoon, Council. Jonathan Springmeyer, Economic Development Department, Redevelopment Agency Director. We're going to talk about sending kids to college again. It's, it's that time of year. Just for review, for the past six years, we have participated in the Opportunity Scholars Program with the University of Utah and their Eccles School of Business. This provides, they provide scholarships and mentoring for first-generation college students. The graduation rates are about two and a half times higher than, than an average college student without those benefits. And the redevelopment agency has participated in this for six years now. We're proposing the same funding that we've had the last several years of $180,000. 104 of that 80 will be to provide student housing for up to 16 West Valley City students, West Valley City residents. We do this by leasing four units at the ICO Fairborn Station. We cover all of the cost, rent, utilities, everything but their snack and beverages. We're told from the, from the directors of the program that the ICO units are the favorites of the, of the students. They, they tend to be the, the center of the activity for all of the opportunity scholars, kids, whether it's study groups or hanging out at the pool or maybe combining the two. They're, they're popular. It's a popular spot for the kids. This 104,000 of the 180 comes from our housing set aside that is statutorily required under state law as part of our redevelopment project areas. So the, we've got a certain percentage of that money that has to go to low to moderate income housing. This qualifies, even though the housing itself is not low to moderate income, this recipients are. So this is a qualified use for some of those, those funds. The balance of $76,000 will go directly to the University of Utah to be used for scholarships for those students, for West Valley students. I should reiterate that all of the $180,000 will go to West Valley Students Program. Program is open to anyone who qualifies. Our money is restricted to West Valley City residents. Last year, we provided scholarships for 24 West Valley students and graduated 16 last spring. Also point out that the number of West Valley students, residents in this program far outweigh those that we are providing funding for, which is, which is great for our kids and opens up the opportunity if we want to, you know, if we ever want to do more in the future. But almost half of the kids that are involved in the, in the Opportunity Scholars Program at the business school come from West Valley. Any questions on this authorization?
Sorry, what did you just say? Did you say over half the kids?
Almost half of the total number of kids in the Opportunity Scholars Program are West Valley City residents.
And the others are participating through other cities?
We are the only city that participates in this. These are the, this is a scholarship program through the business school. The majority of their funding, all of their funding other than us comes from private donations, corporate donors, typical university funding.
So if over half are from West Valley, we're, we're sponsoring or scholar, giving scholarship to less than half that are not from West Valley?
We're covering about half of the kids that are from West Valley, maybe slightly under that.
Then do we know how many of those kids are graduates of Granger, Hunter?
Don't have that data in front of me, but I would say that the overwhelming majority are graduates from either Hunter or Granger. I don't have, I don't have those numbers exactly, but that's typically, anecdotally, those that qualify for this program, our first-generation kids have those financial, meet the financial requirements to receive these scholarship programs are unlikely to be at one of the charter schools that has, that is more cost prohibitive.
John?
Yes.
Here you can let us know about the qualifications after we see this money. Like maybe five years in West Valley City, first person go to college. Can you tell us?
Yeah, they have to be, they, they have to be residents. Don't think we have a restriction on a, on a, how long they have to be a resident in, in West Valley. The biggest qualifications for, that's the one for our, for us. In order to receive our money, they have to be West Valley City residents. The overall program, they've got to be first-generation college students, meaning no other member of their family, other, either a parent or an older sibling has ever entered college. We probably, most of us have got, have or will have soon college-age kids. I've got one student now at the University of Utah. I had one that just graduated and I'm a graduate there myself and thought, well, I'll know how this system works. It's really easy. It's changed a little bit since 1988. We don't go and walk and sign papers and fill things out. And when my oldest was there, it was, it, it was a bit of an education for me and for his mother to understand how, how the college system works, how they get to their right classes, how they, you know, just, just understanding the mechanism. And I had the benefit of being a primary English speaker and being a college graduate myself to, for a lot of these families, those barriers, it's going to be overwhelming. And one of the things I personally love about the Opportunity Scholarship Program is they're not just handing these kids a check and saying, good luck. They're holding their hand and walking them through the process, whether it's to the registrar's office or, you know, they've got to be, it, it's through the business school. So they, their, their degrees have to be within the, one of the degrees within the business school. But the mentoring portion of this program, I think, is, is one of the most beneficial. Did that, did I answer your questions? Thanks.
Do we as a city have a formal mentoring alignment or relationships so that our students can be interning here in departments at City Hall or in, you know, in our finance and business? So that we can hopefully train people here, retain them to work here?
It is, we don't yet. It is on my agenda. It is something that I have discussed with, well, with sitting over here, Nate Webster, who is our business retention manager and also is the chairman of the board of the Opportunity Scholars Program. Nate's involvement is, in this program is, 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 is pretty. It's not shocking when you know Nate, but it's, it's, it's pretty overwhelming. One of the things I've tasked him with is to, what's next? How do we, you know, and, and it's, you, you hit it. It's exactly that. We do have a couple of departments that would seem to be a, on paper, a good fit for, or whether it's a summer internship after scholarship or after, after graduation. My department's one of them. Jim's department is another that seemed like they would be natural fits. We're also working in, one of the ways this works well within Nate's scope of work is what are our, what, who in our business community, what have, what businesses in West Valley City could also benefit from these interns as well as provide a, a, a benefit to the, the students themselves and help them make that next step. And ultimately to help them, you know, our, our goal is to educate our youth and it, and have a, a better educated workforce in West Valley City. And no better way to do that than to help them get jobs within the city. So that is something we are actively working on, yes.
So the money that's coming from the RDA is going to help West Valley City students.
Exclusively.
But, but the Opportunity Scars is a bigger program than you.
That is correct.
And the West Valley students are part of that.
They are part of that. We are, we are one of the contributors. They are part of that. We are, we are one of the contributors. We're one of, we're a substantial contributor. Um, but we are one of of many contributors um to this program. Hundred and seventy five kids, hundred. Hundred and ninety eight kids in the program. Okay, there's the numbers. Hundred and ninety eight in the program, one twenty of them are ours.
Just had a comment, not to be overly critical, but um on the housing component of it. So I I know a young man who was one of the first. Six years ago, he was part of this program and he went from his home a couple miles away in West Valley to live in this with. Or other or three other students and so. Um, you know, he had a place to live and he spent most of the time, he had to go get dinner or do laundry at home anyway because it was two miles or whatever away. I'm just wondering, and other than your, this is probably your first time living on your own. But again, you're only a couple of miles away. If we could do. More scholarships. Didn't have the housing, I suppose, unfortunately. I don't know, I'm just, it just seemed odd that he lived. His home was a couple of miles away, but yet he was living here at Fairborn.
Yeah.
And would go home almost always and then come sleep here.
Yeah, I. I think some of that. I I have a son that spent lived last year in the dorms and and did similar things and I'm only. You know, a few miles from campus myself. The. We we don't, there, we don't try to overstep and get in the university's business on. On who should receive the housing, who's who's most worthy to receive that housing and and who's not. That's that's up to them. We provide it. Um, they they determine what students are. Most worthy or need that housing. I know we've had, well, we had a student last year um that we need, we've. Nate had to work out with with Ico, the owner, to keep them there a little bit longer because. If she had moved out at the end of the semester, she was homeless. So we, I think we kind of have the the full spectrum uh of that. And yes, there there may be. Could we do more in scholarships and and less in housing? We could, we could certainly shift that. I'm one that believes that that having even an off-campus. Housing college experience is important for part of that development and and maturation of the of these students. Um, but yes, that's certainly something we could look at doing, yes.
And this, this same topic came up six years ago. And um I remember thinking that that uh, you know, why are we housing them if they, if we're housing them in West Valley? But uh, I was brought up then that a lot of them are. Cause they're first generation. College, it's their house isn't always a great place environment for a college student. They often get roped into to babysitting or or household chores and 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 they're unable. To to really focus on their studies and stay in school. This this really gives them a greater opportunity. To focus and uh complete what what's required.
You answered that better than I did, thank you.
But but one one thing, cause I I also had the same. Thought when I first came, I just wanted to add to, uh, one thing we we should be reminded of is the. The funding for it is coming from the RDA, which there's a mandatory statutory requirement. To use a certain percentage of the RDA for housing. We couldn't use it for anything else. And I thought it was a pretty clever way. When I first questioned that, I I thought it's pretty clever, actually. Um, cause when that first came out, that statutory requirement to use those funds for housing. I remember trying to figure out how, what are we gonna do with it? But you have to use it for that and to be able to use it for for students. And whether or not their situation was, well, we don't know what their situation was previous to that. We know they're guaranteed, they are residents of West Valley. As we're, we're paying for their, for them to live here. But that's that's the the kick, that was the kicker for me is that we have to use it for housing. And this is a clever way to use it for people bettering themselves. Taking that one expense away from them. And if if anything, if we're gonna look at it, probably look at maybe more, more say. And how they're, you know, rather than take away the housing component, because like I said, I think it was whether it's. I don't know, Jonathan, you and Nate came up with that. It was, I was pretty clever to come up with uh that proper use of that. Those funds.
Thank you, yeah, it's. It's a, it's, we've got a nice advantage with, we've got the Fairborn, the Ico Fairborn. Residences which are, you know, amongst the nicest uh multifamily development we have in the city. That is right next to the tracks line that allows them, you know, with the, as being students, they get a free UTA pass. You know, I mean, it's, it's the next best thing to living on campus without the. The cost of living at the dorms, which is about fifteen grand a year per kid. Um, so this is a, this is a good opportunity. And yes, we do have to spend these monies. We're statutorily required to spend these monies. On housing. Um, and this was uh, this was a a. A nice way to to spend it on on deserving and not that all of our housing recipients aren't deserving. But a non-traditional recipient of these of these funds.
This program is very good. I think it's great. I, you know, um, just wonder about this uh. John, um, we want them to succeed, you know what I'm saying? We spend money and we want them to succeed. Is that we have any uh particular uh program like uh. Checking on them, maybe stop by and say hello and because sometimes they're first generation and. You know, we don't want them to distract from things here and there. Like people that live in a dorm, like they don't have to be home at ten o'clock. Whatever, you know what I'm saying? But here in West Valley City, do we have that kind of program? We visit them or someone in school. But you, they come down here, they visit the students and try to have them out or outside.
Yes, they do. We, we, when I say we, I'm meaning Nate does to to some extent. Um, in his in his role with the Opportunity Scholars Program, but the staff up there. Um, they they take the mentorship um portion of this very seriously. They do. They do make, you know, these, this is not your typical send your kid to college and if he goes to class or not. You know, nobody's, nobody's watching, nobody cares. Um, they do. They take it very seriously. They and 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 I I the students, I think, take it seriously too. They understand that they're that. Their situation is is unique and they've been given an opportunity that no one in their family's ever been given before. And, you know, they don't want to mess it up for their family. They don't want to mess it up for future generations of of uh. Of these of these scholarship dollars as well. Yeah, I think the the program monitors them definitely.
So we kind of raising the bar to like, sooner than soon like uh GPA, you have to admit in order to. Qualify for that.
I know there are minimum GPA requirements. I know the scholarships uh are are up for review on an annual basis. I don't know specifically exactly what those requirements are, but I know that they have minimum GPA requirements. They probably need to maintain at least a three. They've got to maintain at least a three point O to 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 receive the scholarship for the next year. It's they're not given four years and, you know, and handed. It's it's up to review every time, so. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll look for it next week.
Hey, thank you.
Need for a closed session tonight? Okay. One last item.